Yes.
Everybody here? Need some more? Goodness, my Father, we thank you for this beautiful Lord's day. We just thank you for the rain, Lord, that you provided for us. Holy possession, goodness, fill us tonight during this meeting. Lead God directly, Lord, and everything we do will be pleasing in your eyes. May I ask all this in the name of our presence, Lord, in the same grace of Jesus' name?
Amen.
The allegiance to the
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I thank everybody who come down here today, evening. Let's go on to the lower call. Curtis is here, Jeff is here, Wendy's here, Stu is here. Tyler and Franklin is under the weather. Tyler COVID, Franklin the good friend. I'll be there in a minute, of course. I'm here, Mr. Sherry's here, Mr. Jim is here, and I'm in the business. Mr. Warren is here, even though it is midnight. So.
Pardon me.
Exactly. All right. Ladies. Y'all will have the dubious honor of this right here. This is, this is what we call fun, uh, meetings. So, Mr. Warren been been involved with a couple of meetings right here. And here we go. Uh, would that be acceptable, approval of the minutes for the budget workshop? Excuse me, Jeff, Stu.
I'm jumping ahead.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Before you guys vote. Uh, do that, do you want to vote as to whether or not you want to allow each of them to vote remotely?
Do we have both of them here?
Well, Tyler's trying to get on, Franklin isn't.
I thought, why don't you sit with me here?
We're just gonna get that.
Okay.
So. I mean, it's up to you guys.
Please do it by motion.
I make a motion that we accept the votes of Mr. Voorhees and Mr. Schuler, um, for per, for voting purposes tonight, um, due to them being on a second.
Without opposition, motion carries. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, they will be able to vote. Next up is approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I say aye.
You have a question? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same. Tyler, can y'all hear me?
No, I can't hear you now and for it to him.
How about you, Franklin? Okay.
I will be there. Where are you going?
Tyler, just Tyler on.
Do you want me to send you my, that's what you're getting on?
Okay, somebody call us, any microphone speaker?
Uh, you know what, let me do that, that's even easier.
I will counsel my request because I prefer seeing both of them here.
Okay, that's fine. There's a technical situation here.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm, uh, trying to get the zoom like one right now.
I'm like, I need a sounder. Franklin, Tyler, is that sound ready? It is working, it is working.
Buddy, I sure hope you get the feed better. You too, Franklin. I knew. Okay. I'm calling, that's all.
Nobody, nobody.
Sure, I got it first time. Okay, uh, all right, we have approval of the agenda. Next up is approval of the minutes for the August twenty-sixth, twenty-fourth budget workshop.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the August twenty-sixth budget workshop.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same, motion carries. And next up is a minute for the August twenty-sixth town and city council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four town council meeting.
I say aye.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, close, same, motion carries. Moment of participation. Read the speaker request form out in the hallway and submit it to the deputy town clerk. As many approach the podium, speak clearly, state your full name, address for the record. Comments will be limited to a maximum of thirty minutes per person. First up tonight is Mr. Allen.
He didn't make any other conflict, so he's going to the next one.
All right, uh, the lodge has decided he's going to refer to the next meeting.
Right, I know that, oh, oh.
Okay. Do we have anything else on this that is not on the agenda?
You said we didn't.
You guys are on it.
Yep.
But we're on the agenda over here. Okay. Okay, next thing, we'll move forward then. Information items. We have a Koozie training Wednesday, September the fourth at six P M. Uh, this again is to give you ideas of how this new system works. I suggest that for all of you that wish to participate in that, by all means, get afraid of it because it is, it is going to be the way. So it's just going to help us tremendously as far as working in the office and then able to accommodate people and customers. So our first transpublic hearing, Tuesday budget and proposed minutes rate is Monday, September the ninth here at. Get this five oh one exactly.
Because it can't be at five.
It has to be at five oh one.
Right.
I did not make that rule up.
Why?
Yeah, why? All right, I, I, it's been, I swear, I've been doing this for twenty-something years.
And each time has to be.
That has always been, and we have to watch that clock, and when it is five oh one.
Okay.
Now, you can be late, which can be early.
I understand.
Public hearing to adopt annual fire assessment resolution is Monday, September the ninth. That also is here, that's at six o'clock. So we'll have the first meeting at five oh one. That one will last about five minutes. And then we'll have a short recess. Freshness will be served. And then we'll start the public hearing at six o'clock.
Please don't come out with fresh, but don't come in at that.
All right, the next Koozie training is Sat- Saturday, September the fourteenth at ten A M. Awesome. Uh, next town council meeting will be September the sixteenth at six P M here. Our twenty B C walking board meeting is Wednesday, September the eighteenth at one P M at senior key. All of you are welcome to come to that, it is an advertised meeting. Uh, our final transpublic hearing meeting is on the twenty-third of September at five P M. And then, uh, the Livy County Health Department Community Improvement Plan meeting is Tuesday, September. We'll elaborate on that soon, I doubt that issue.
Livy County Health Department?
Yes.
Oh, um, I think chip has something to do with kids. Anyway, they've been having their meetings here, so.
Okay, so anyhow, that's at one P M here.
According to the news, they're trying to bump up all the vaccinations they can get on kids. That might be what everyone likes.
Thank you for that. Uh, resident of Monty Foods Bank is Friday, September the twenty-seventh at nine thirty. Uh, in North Florida Transportation Planning Center is Tuesday, October eighth at nine thirty, so you going to that?
Yes. I am too.
You rescheduled right.
Okay, I, I need to do a reschedule of that situation. Did you, did you get that hotline notification? We've been getting emails, I've been sending them right every other day, and I sent you one another day.
Yes, yes.
Okay. That's something that Curtis, if he is, he would do. And that's a, first, that's a tar college, O'Kella? Is it turning on gas lines?
I feel like I sent that to you, but you might have the inmates.
Wonder.
I can't remember what it was, or you might be on vacation.
Oh, okay.
But that's something that you might be interested in, so it would be nice to have somebody get to it. Uh, Bronson Beautiful Day Number Seven is October the nineteenth at ten A M. Uh, that is here, and we were.
Centered.
Oh, we're going to stretch this out. All right, and next up is the Homecoming Parade, that is Thursday, October the twenty-fourth at five P M. And that will start at the regular situation. Are you excited to go to the moon ride or not?
I'm excited, yes.
Okay, I, I couldn't.
I mean, if I get a Google before then, I go, um, did you still?
You saying you got a Google? We don't want to do it. Truckers Tree is Saturday, Saturday, October the twenty-sixth at six thirty, thirty P M at the James Bond Park.
Yep.
Uh, maybe update on that.
I did, I talked to Vicki today, the only church she has heard from was North Baptist Church. At the only church. So tomorrow she was gonna actually try and then go into each of the churches and see if she could find anyone to talk to or.
Tomorrow will be a good day.
So, it's another one here, right? So, you know, it's right now.
Okay.
Do you know what church are you going to?
Everyone.
Everyone. You got it on the list, can I have it? Who's on the list?
We pulled every church, even outside of Bronson, the city of Bronson, we pulled every church there is.
Okay, well, may I ask, the next time we do something like that, put it on there, the churches that you're going to.
We doing all of them.
Vicki.
Do you want, do you want to sign with your church?
Vicki is in charge of that, but you know, I, I don't, I don't know how she's.
You can, you can, I'm sure she'll think.
Yeah, do you want to?
Okay, this is. This is something else that I, I, I need to bring up, and I forgot about it till just then. Uh, I was in a meeting the other day, uh, in Williston, and the chief of police over there was there, and maybe he was talking about their churches over there and several other churches that they would get involved in for a security. If, if you, and this is what he said, hit and heard, okay, he said it's not that it's gonna happen, his word it's gonna happen. And that's where they're, they're showing people how to secure the churches for public meetings and everything. And, and I did not, there, there are grants available for you to obtain to get security system for your churches, especially with church. So that was the chief of police, based in Bronson area, I don't know any more details of that, only thing I know is I could turn up with Rex over here, they were all gonna try to portage something for this area. Well, I might say, O'Kella, O'Kella and Williston is portaging that thing yet or somehow.
Well, mine's got A V T, all right.
Yes. Okay, uh, Stu?
Okay, so, first up, let's, um, give you just a little background on, um, what's going on for it, six sixty-seven Marshburn Drive. So, just, this goes back a while, a while now. Um, so originally, you guys probably remember this, Ms. Cribs made a complaint about her neighbor, um, Jim Cross having a pig on her property. The property was a three-foot acre. Code Enforcement Board asked her to move the pig from one side of the mobile home to the other side of the mobile home in return. Ms. Cross made a complaint against Ms. Cribs, having a family member live in a shed. Building official Mike Stacks went out to assess the situation. That's when he realized that the shed was three feet, seven inches from the property line, and per our L D Rs, the shed has to be ten feet from the property line. So they are requesting a variance for the shed. Um, the shed has been on the property, there's a correspondence here from the, from the.
Nineteen ninety-nine?
Since nineteen ninety-nine, it's been there for a long time.
Prior to nineteen ninety-nine, right? Don't pay any taxes prior to nineteen ninety-nine, that's just the record, only goes back to that part.
And there was also correspondence here from, um, the, the neighbor on the other side of the crabs, six sixty-five Marshburn, Travis Holder, saying that they have no issues with the issue being two feet, seven inches from the property.
There was some issue with the code enforcement here as to when the ten-foot setback, when it affected, or whether it was in effect when the shed was what, where.
I don't know. I don't know that, I only know little setbacks.
That, that has to be determinable, and that is crucial, Minister, that's a state law nineteen seventy-seven, but. What do you mean by that? There is, uh, I. State law on locating sheds? Uh, yes, yeah.
Setback.
Setbacks, it's inside the setback, it's the setback from the shed. I can't, but I need to clarify. Most, most municipal municipalities have, have given variances. Miami even has a two-foot setback with a letter evaporated from the neighbor, that's where I got that idea from. Um, but, I, I mean, that's.
I would also like it long, but this is not a prefection.
Yes.
This is not some tiny little thing that we could just move.
Yeah, somebody built that there way here from my mom over the property.
Yeah.
Um, I, so there was also another option that Mr. Mike was talking about. To me personally, I would be more interested in going down that route than giving them a variance.
That's.
And that was to let them have that shed until it is no longer functional. And they cannot put any, any money into that shed to fix it, repair it, anything like that.
Right.
Was that the?
It's a temporary, um, even cost of.
It's a variance, right?
Well.
I think you're very confusing with the estoppel that they were talking about, that was with Tony Cuffinzy though, right?
No, he was, he was talking about the temporary.
Yeah.
Structure.
Yeah, he had a dead link for it.
For the life, it's a life only, yeah.
You can't touch it, you can't do anything to it, it just stays there. It falls down, it falls down.
That's the consequences of variance, right?
Yeah, and, and, and maybe you'll open up all kind of legal things for futuristic people to come in.
What, what, let me just say, what? This, this is legal, this is not editorial or philosophical. If somebody, when the, when the law says you could only have an outbuilding within ten feet on the sideline, build one within three and a half feet of the sideline. It was a violation and it never ceased to be. I realize the difficulty results of the county, and I personally sympathize with it, but it's, under the technical law, it, it's, you can't build it and then say, who's? She, that's, this is, or she didn't build it, she bought the property to you. My mom's old, yeah, six-year education. So, I mean, I, I think one thing ought to be done, whatever the, if the board determines to do, somebody's got to do, do, do we know the year that this, that the shed was put on the ground? All we know is prior to nineteen seventy-nine.
Yeah, that's the only information I can find, I went through the tax department office to find that.
When, when was the house built? Uh, the mobile homes was put there in ninety-five or ninety-six. It's ninety-five mobile homes, so. Okay, so let, let, let's assume that, that the shed was placed in there around ninety-six, okay? So I'm, I'm giving you the earliest date possible for an assumption. I think before any determination is made, whatever the determination is, that somebody should do the research and see what the ordinance or setbacks read in nineteen ninety-six. It's not, it's not, that that's not possible.
It doesn't, right, I went and looked today, I went and got, um, I actually, to be honest with you, this, this was kind of crazy because, um, when you go to look it up, it's in what is called Libya Estates, that's the name of where they live. And then there's Olivia Estates Mobile Home Park, and that is actually that strip that they live on. And when I went to go find the plaque, it's missing out of the number three book, and it's missing out of the number four book. Um, it's missing out of both of them. Um, so I.
But the, the, the flag wouldn't specify where you could put the shed.
Yeah, that's in the setback, well, setbacks are, right?
It's only, only, there's only one, it's worth flagging, and surely Bronson has only one, it's immediately, yes.
Yeah.
Just a question of reading.
Unfortunately, there's no records of when the setbacks, and I know because I've gone all the way back to nineteen eighty-seven. Appreciate it. Yeah, I went back, read every minute from every meeting, from nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-eight up until now, looking for that address.
And you can't find it?
There's nothing, there's no major setbacks, there's no. There were variances done, but there were no names or addresses attached to it. Isn't that true?
Well, then I'm gonna say from a legal perspective, at the risk of being overly liberal, if you can't assume that somebody committed a violation. If, if, if you can't prove otherwise, you have to assume what somebody did with the property was law. So if we can't show that it's only one, it's applied in nineteen ninety-six, that's that you can't build it within three and a half feet, and nobody went out there and enforced anything for the country, uh, these high folks got a leg up on this.
Do you remember where the L D Rs ever updated at all during your tenure, if you can remember? Because that's where it's in the L D Rs.
They, I can answer that because they were updated, because there's a note on a random piece of paper in the L D R book that says. Or things. No, but there's, it says they were updated in the state, but there's, it was a handwritten note, there's nothing legally.
I know truly, of course, no one, the setbacks were in nineteen ninety-six, but you can assume, without knowing, you can enforce something that, that you came to establish. I think that's, that's the situation, they, they find themselves that.
So are you saying we don't even need to proceed with this thing?
I'm saying, well considered, and, and to, to put the matter to rest, you want to give them the variance on the, maybe they need, maybe they don't, but.
How would?
They paid the fee. Yeah, they, we paid the fee.
Is the tenant gonna stay with the leave?
It'll be just this property, correct? Just this property.
And only.
It will stay in this one, but it's only to that shed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Like if they put other shed on, yeah, they can't.
Right. And as, as, as you recited, when that shed falls apart, they can't replace it.
Right.
Because variance always means that the property is moving toward it for me. Sir, can I clarify, we can replace it, just not in seven.
Right, right.
Just want to clarify that. Let your mom let you go.
It ain't on?
My mom was riding somewhere through this.
It look like a truck that's on, uh, Jeep or Jeepers.
My, my mom's shed?
Yeah.
It was, it was built pretty good, I'm gonna laugh.
It got to be. And if you get them three little pigs, a little they throw you.
To, uh, clarify this multiple times, and we need, we do not need to do any more homework on this to find out, is what you're saying?
I'm, I'm being told that we can't find that. If we could find out, I would definitely be a favorer of that.
I mean, we assumed that ten feet was what was in place at the time, because when you can't find it, you need to consult. And we've been, trust me, we've gone.
I'm round and round and round, yes.
But if you look at those lot sizes, those lot sizes are literally the shape of a single wide mobile home. They're very narrow, narrow, and then they go back. And it, but like in nineteen seventy, it was strictly designed for mobile homes. So I wouldn't be surprised if the variance was different.
Can, can I ask what's the width of the, of the?
Shed is twenty-two by twenty-four.
There you go.
And the lot is.
And we did come up with a solution that it could be moved.
Oh.
But not even.
Fifteen feet, but nobody will touch it.
Not even.
I have called, house movers, I have called, shed movers, they say they can't.
You can't even get nobody to tear one down.
Yes. I mean, I.
What's the width of the lot? The width of the lot is sixty-five, I don't know what size it is, I'm guessing. It's, it's sixty feet wide? Yeah. And, and the, the mobile home is on it, it's forty-two feet wide? Uh, that, that shed is. What size of the home? The home is twenty-three, six by forty-two.
We got a twenty, we got a twenty-four foot in the mobile home, sitting on a sixty foot.
It's a shed. It's, I mean, it's not a mobile home, it's, it's a shed.
No, 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 I'm talking right, there's a mobile home on.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's up away from the shed.
Yeah, and it's twenty-four foot wide.
Uh-huh.
And you got a sixty foot long, so you got basically twenty foot on each side, and it's sitting at the same.
Oh, the way the, it said, it said, ten foot six would just pass that, sit back on that side, and thirty mill.
It's sitting there for twenty-five foot from the road too.
So with that being said, you would automatically realize that that would be, the standard would be ten foot then, if you used that as a standard. But I'm, I'm not gonna argue that call.
I'm not, just like I said. Sir, that shed might be.
Some of this stuff is in higher benefit city.
That shed might be over in the mobile home.
That's true.
No, it's not.
So, okay.
But it's been moved.
It had been moved.
I mean, it probably has been moved six different times, now the stuff on it, but probably been sold to J C and fifty.
We really have been. We really have been around this, I mean, they've both been in my office, we've all met with Mike, like I said, we, we gave them ideas to move it. Mike even suggested cutting it in half, I mean, we, we have been around and around, we've tried every. We were just trying to find a way to comply. I mean, I.
Okay, uh.
So you're, again, so this is as the local planning agency, not as the town council has to go before the L P A first.
Exactly, yeah.
They act as the planning board first, since we don't have a planning board, then they'll have to ask, act as the council act.
Okay.
In a different meeting.
In a different meeting?
That's correct.
Has nothing to do with this.
So we need a motion to accept the ordinance?
Right.
Variance.
Variance, I'm sorry. Do we need a copy of the, the?
Yes, it's a ground survey, it's a byproduct of the, the size and shape of the lot, and the absence of any establishment of what the setback was when this particular shed was installed there. So to solve the confusion and uncertainty of variance, we would suggest that.
And absent of.
Absence of, of proof of what the zoning was in nineteen ninety-six when the shed was presumably put there.
But then we just figuring out to do anything? Well, technically we do, because if we don't, then that leaves it open for other people to follow in footsteps, and we can't have it.
That's not what we're trying to do.
We'll be there fighting for the rest of this month, ladies.
Because I, I, I've read through Bronson, there's thousands that can't get a push mower between the neighbor's fence and the house. So.
We're not trying to open up can worms, we're just trying to find a solution that.
We gotta get some, my mom, my mom is great, we'll just get on.
So, again, for clarification here on that, we are going to, though, as a.
You're, you're already technically as a planning board, it's not really bad, it's several minutes.
That's why, that's why. Franklin, you or Tyler, got anything you want to say on this?
He said it.
Oh, he did. You're good, okay.
He's on it.
Yeah, I see Tyler. How you doing, man?
I'm hanging up the phone.
Yeah, okay, I was thinking, saying, okay.
Is he laying the floor?
No, he's leaning against the wall.
Yes, he's still on it.
Okay. We got, y'all have anything you want to say about this?
I'm here.
Okay. Franklin, how about you?
I'm done.
Okay, all right. But Jim, you said you got the paperwork over there.
Um, due to the size and shade of the lot and absence of zoning code of nineteen ninety-six, um, I move to ask for a variance for the shed for six, six, seven.
Marshburn.
Marshburn Drive. I said. I said.
I say.
All right, we have a motion for a variance on this property, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same.
So this would be a resolution at the next meeting?
I'll do a resolution.
Resolution.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, thank you guys.
And it's all caused by that little pig. Little pig. It's not a little pig, it's the rats, the, the pig.
Besides the possum and their maggots.
Now I'm really sorry, yeah.
That was the major issue.
He asked who, when I originally draw her picture.
I think, I have the pictures, yes.
There were rats, like, as long as my leg, they, they were possums.
This wasn't any petty thing.
If it was a nostradamus, no problem, it's a nice vision. I'll tell you this way, they ate her ditch litter. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ian.
Yeah, that was good.
All right, I'm next. You good? Okay, second reading of ordinance twenty-four dash zero four, and ordinance for authorizing the adoption of small-scale future land agreement from single-family residents to commercial and rezoning of parcel number zero-three-four-five-eight-zero-zero-zero-zero, which is nine forty-five East Hathaway Avenue from R-one Single Family Residential, to see when commercial, including an effective date. And as you recall, we've already been through a public hearing, we've been through first reading, this is the second reading, so assuming it passes, the town council today will be adopted.
This is the one that was, the brother, the sister, okay.
Can I check today, it's still in his name as a tenant?
I think the motion, we accept ordinance number twenty-four dash four.
There's a motion, enter say, all those in favor, adopt twenty-four dash four. So I find a stick, aye. Close, make sure.
All right, next up is. First reading of ordinance twenty-four dash zero five, and ordinance for the involuntary annexation of certain lands containing findings and legislative conclusions, procedures for notice and a referendum, mandatory statutory, mandatory statutory compliance and effective date. Okay, so to give everybody a little explanation as to what you're seeing before you, the parcel, and I gave you guys a little map to kind of show you what's going on here, um, and you guys are probably really familiar with this big parcel up here, one hundred and seventy-one acres, it is owned by, it is owned by Interst Group, Inc. Um, two different companies are interested in buying that parcel of land, they have made inquiries to Scott Osteen over at Nature Coast Business Development Council, um, the question keeps coming up, what sort of utilities are available, they would want water and potentially sewer, um, and then, of course, it's a couple miles out, so this is where we came up with the thought of just annexing pretty much everything from where town limits ends currently, which is that little line right there, and it's pretty much just a straight line all the way up to that large parcel over there. So if you look right after the ordinance, all of the people would be affected, because forty-one, if I'm not mistaken, are all listed up by their names, their addresses, their parcel ID, and obviously this would have to go before, I'm assuming, is it just them? Who votes on this? Is it just them, or?
The, the owners, seventy percent, at least have to approve.
True, okay. So, of course, we've talked about annexing land for, for some time, we're not sure if we want to go toward Chief Point or Williston or which direction, but, and this one probably makes most sense, just because we've got these companies that are interested in that parcel of land, and whether or not the person wants to sell it is a different issue, these owners since two thousand seventeen, um, are clearly not being interested in selling it, but it's our thought to kind of get the ball.
Church of Congress State. Church of Congress State. On the, it's on the, on this, where the rap, all of it, it's a list, all the people, and it's on that list.
So town limits ends, if you guys are familiar with, um, the house that Jamie Griffin built, there's one parcel right next to his, that is the last parcel in town limits right now, so it goes up to Patterson, I think, Drive, if I'm not mistaken, Curtis, that little white line you go up is Patterson, so that's where the town limits is right now.
We do have water out there.
We have water going how far?
Um, where are we going? Kind of where we live.
Yeah.
That's where this goes, right?
Yeah, that's where it goes.
So we don't, we don't, uh, the town doesn't own that little area where, um, like across from you?
That's, um, when you turn on Ninety-Seventh Court, um, I actually, to come into town, right, I think the church had got the Brunson, was the church, whole church, had they owned that?
That road that goes to the state u, that's not owned by the city?
Which road? Going into the apartments?
Yeah, we have to own that, because that's on this side of Powerwood Village, that means you come out of Powerwood Village, come that, where Brunson, that road to the right, and it makes a U.
That, that's in the county.
I'm trying to figure out what road he's on.
The subdivision of Jimmy Jones, you remember?
Yeah, the sawmakers.
They're on that list.
Yeah, there's sawmakers on that road, and then, uh, there's Whites, Debbie White, her and her husband live there.
Debbie White?
Yes. No, no, not Debbie White, Debbie White. It's, it's his sister-in-law.
Oh, I don't know.
They're on the list, yeah.
So this is, everybody, everybody would be on the list all the way out to there.
Right.
It's this right here, I can see it.
Do you see Sharon, the sawmaker?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
They related to Miss Julie. See, I thought that you owned this, that road was horrible.
This is all county, correct?
I just wanted to just put in the subdivision, put in the subdivision, and then they give it to the county.
These are about the roads or the?
Yeah, the road.
Oh, yeah. So these people would all have to agree, or a certain percentage of them would have to agree?
Mr. Ward, what is it, seventy percent? So you gotta come up with something that is, uh.
Enticing?
Enticing to them, most of the time it is, uh, you're going to offer them utilities, of course, uh, and by doing so, it will help them on their insurance, the homeowners and church, because they get reclassification because of that. And Jeff, what, what's the, uh, what's the difference between being in the city and outside the city on classification? Do you know what that is?
I guess so. I guess so, uh, I think it's almost the same, I mean, there's a little bit.
I know there's a difference, I mean, uh, well, let me rephrase, there is a difference where you have city water and not city water.
You're right.
Where you have.
Things like a nine or eleven.
Yeah, you can also use, um, the participation ability.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we definitely have to put something together and sell it.
For sure.
Yes, it's a selling thing.
Yeah, it's home and lot things, yeah.
Sure. And the difference between the taxes, we would need to do some kind of comparison on that, George, I'll let you go, it's not that much. It, it, it's always been years going past when I've seen this done, you almost give a give and take situation. In other words, yeah, you're gonna have city taxes, but you're gonna save just as much on your insurance and your ability to do things in the city that you can't do in the county. There, that's it.
The real question is, what would this cost the town, though?
In terms of, what, putting water and sewer out there?
I mean, because first we're gonna have to entice them to be interested, and then that's not free, and do we have? I mean, is it possible?
It's possible, I mean, we would obviously have to put something together, I think I, I met with the person who did the annexations, we can all, but for the city of Newberry, so I have their template, like, to put together, you know, some collections and, yes, they have new acts, and, you know, you just have to put something together, which is.
If, if, there is a reason why people put subdivisions in or add to utilities and that is because of the, the cost, and you had this B map situation that we're getting to, it is gonna come to, I mean, it's gonna be hard for somebody to sell a package in the county, the cost of the cost prepared, just with football utilities, I mean, it's gonna be, I, I can tell you this, I, I, I talked to Dylan the other day about it, and he said, now you've got a choice, you can either, the cost of the lot is going to be substantially more, or you could look into putting in your own sewer system, you know, these are small sewer plants, they put in for certain issues, and that's what a lot of them are starting to look at, so, if you're out of town, it can be this way.
But at this point, this is, you're more, you're kind of more of uphill battle with this, because you're talking to people who already have water, who already have septic tanks, so, I mean, you're not a first, you know, I mean, you're not.
But here's what's gonna happen on that B map, you're gonna have to replace that septic tank.
And get it inspected every year, every just a little bit.
Yeah, but that's, that's not, so, I think people are confusing what's going on with the septic tanks, the, the septic system, so, the septic tank that you're talking about that people have to have is only for a specific part of the state, it's not for all of the state.
Seventy percent of Bronson?
If, I'd say eighty-five to ninety percent of Bronson, I looked at the map, there's one little section that does not fall into the B map for two different, we have two different spring bases here.
So what I'm saying right now is this, is it here today, are we going to have some legal stuff that's more of a test of this problem? Most likely so, we talked about this when it came to the Form One situation that we had to do, you know, Mr. Ward, before it's over, we're, we're gonna have some legal deals with this, and I'm sure there will be some on this, too, because DEP is mandating that Elijah Williams, take his perfectly working, fine working septic tank in his house now, and replace it with a fifteen thousand dollar, I'm not saying that exactly, I'm just saying that's about average, septic system, and have somebody to inspect it twice a year, and charge you five hundred dollars each time they test it, and you got to pay.
When I called the DEP, they were completely confused about it, because, and the reason why they were confused about it is because there's several different things going on with DEP. First of all, there's the, the Indian River Lagoon, that is what you're talking about, that is not us, that's on the east side of the state.
We've got a map showing Bronson.
But I'm telling you, when I called them.
Well, let me, let me say this about DEP and any other federal, interstate and local aid, a lot of them don't know what they're talking about, but you might have got somebody that absolutely just picked up the telephone.
I can tell you, Vicky.
Water River Water Management, and I sit in these meetings on a regular basis, and believe me, it's coming.
Vicky's daughter just got married, and they just, they're on, five, six acres, and they're putting in a new mobile home, and.
It depends on where it's at, though.
It sits in between Williston and Brunson in the county, and they have to get an above-ground raised vein enhanced, which is gonna cost about fifteen thousand dollars, and they have to test it every six months, um, and if they cannot test it, then the state will have to come in and test it, and it's gonna cost a couple hundred bucks, you can get certified yourself, Vicky says it's gonna cost about three hundred dollars to get certified yourself, and you can test it every six months, but you have to then report it to the state, and they don't even have their mobile home, and that mobile home comes in next week, and that septic is being put in next week, and they had to have a special raise because they sit in the B map that Brunson and Williston, this area sits in.
It, it don't get no more sandy or hills in between here.
And they have no backyard, because they had to build it up.
From what I understand, for DEP, it did not matter about sandy hills, it mattered about how close you were to the river, that's what it mattered, and I spoke to Ms. Katie Miller, who is the wastewater coordinator for this area.
Well, I tell you what, you come to see your kids, all right, and we'll have water management people there, and I promise you, they can, they can talk to you all day long, though.
No, I was just wondering, I know most of all the new places, they really not, not have, but the ones who already has a home.
They're gonna make those two, how long do they have before?
And see, and see, that's what I'm talking about, and I'm using this as, as just an idea, I'm talking about Elijah having to replace his, I would just be in the citizens. But how can you logically sit down and force somebody to do something like that, that he's already got an established place, you know what I'm saying? It, it, it's no different, your house or mine, even mine, I've got a perfectly working, in fact, I just had mine completely redone, and I remodeled my house, I had to, had to do seventy lines, I had to give all that stuff updates, when I remodeled my house. So, with that being said, I'm subject in the same situation, I'm sure I'm in that path, so if, if, if Vicky's daughter is, I can tell you, I'm in it, so, uh, I, and listen, I don't know how long this is going, like I said, I'm, 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 I'm sure there will be some kind of legal challenges here.
Supposedly you're gonna have to have a switch over by twenty-third.
Look, it, I, it's, it's a difference.
Supposedly you have to have a switch over by twenty-third, that's the rule that's this, but from what I read, it is only for that, you can look it up, it's called Indians River Lagoon Project, and that's what that is, now, if you got under, uh, half an acre, then you gotta get the most expensive septic tank it is anyway, so. So for the sake of this, can you send them something that's like information, just so gather information, just to see if they're interested, and if possible, do a plan, and kind of see where you stand, because.
What are you guys' thoughts, you're saying, like, do you want to?
Well, don't they have to agree to it anyway?
Well, no, this is involuntary.
Well, it's involuntary in its initial stages, but seventy percent may run, however, this doesn't accomplish anything, except set the stage to then notify them that there's gonna be a referendum on whether or not this extension should be applied, so it, it just starts a whole rolling to do this, it doesn't commit.
Here goes, here goes, there has to be a vote by B, where they have, they have a choice.
It's not by condemnation, it's age-based, they gotta wanna join the team, so it's good.
I mean, is your thought, sorry, is your thought that we would, if the councils are made able to this, we would pass this first, then, you know, be able to include this in the information that we send them and say, hey, this is, you know, the benefits or whatever, you want to have this first?
I, I would say so, but it, it, it is not outside the realm of possibility to go to them completely in advance, the statute doesn't say to this, but I think you have the flexibility to do it, and say, we're thinking of this, uh, how would you react? But that's not an official reaction.
Right.
And, uh.
We're just asking at that point.
I don't know if that really gets you where you want to get.
For, for this, it's from Curtis, in your favor.
Oh, oh.
It's not, you know, rather voluntarily.
I haven't either, but he did, he bought it.
No, you didn't, yeah.
Because of the industrial reality.
Sure.
But this is wrong.
You guys.
You know what I'm saying? If we don't want to do that.
I think what Susan's saying, I agree with her, is if, if you guys are serious about it, which presumably you are, you probably best go up just following the statute orders you want, see where it leads.
Yeah. A question I've always had, and Mr. Ward, most of you have seen this, and everybody else here has, did your travels, how anyone in Newberry was able to annex everything from Newberry City Line Sign all the way to Jonesville and to Archer, the distance that they did, in the period of time they did?
If you paid attention to going, when you get to the blood light and go left on the Newberry, every, every five years, the Newberry City Line Sign was coming towards Every, every five years, the Newberry City Limitation was coming towards Archer. So, it's not just happened, it's been a steady process where.
But they, they had to, just like for instance, right now, I don't know where y'all, where the. Newberry is supposed to take over Archer's water source.
I imagine they're getting committed when you get pulled into the city of Gainesville with their mileage rights. Because their, city of Gainesville is one of the highest in the state of Florida.
And Archer has had several problems.
If you look at their town limits, their town limit, it's, it's like a, it's like Tetris, like, and they're everywhere. So, they're trying now to literally close all these enclaves because they're, they're everywhere. I mean, there's no continuity in their county.
So, if, if you put a city limit sign like the one between Jonesville or Gainesville, that doesn't mean that everything from there is what you're saying.
No.
Okay.
I don't, no, no, no.
I just assumed when they were able to put that sign out there. They were able, they got everything.
It's all jagged.
So, we're just like a chicken hole.
Literally, yes. It's terrible. And now they're having to, you know, because I guess years ago you could just kind of pick and choose where you.
I don't know exactly what Newberry is, but they are very.
Well, I know, believe me, I know. Yeah, Sue and I have been in conversations with them.
Well, they're getting confidence and stuff too, though.
Yeah.
Well, that's always been.
Exactly the word, and that's what they are, they're aggressive.
Okay.
So, what is that we're supposed to be doing? Because I kinda got a.
If you're interested in.
Yeah, I should say. I make a motion that, um.
To adopt the ordinance on first reading.
We adopt the ordinance on first reading.
Oh, I guess, I see.
All right, we've got a motion in a second to adopt the reading, uh, twenty-four dash. Oh, five. All those in favor, signify the same eye.
I agree.
Both say, this is here. All right, next.
Next, ordinance twenty-four oh six. An ordinance to ban the introduction of lawn clippings and debris onto public streets and facilities and including an effective date.
I'm sorry. This is my fault, I'm sorry.
No. You don't have to apologize.
No, I, I'm not crying, I have something to add.
I promised you that's long, but.
So, you might recall a few weeks ago, um, Council Phillips asked me to put something in our next newsletter about how lawn clippings, blowing lawn clippings onto the street was illegal. So, of course, I looked up our court, court ordinances, we don't have anything in there. However, it is very common, especially in larger municipalities. Um, so the examples I came up with were Melhorne, Miami, Orlando, Pensacola, Tampa, and interestingly enough, Latrell County. It is illegal. So, I mean, we just took a very small portion from another municipality that just basically says glass flipping, grass clippings. And/or vegetated material debris shall not be deposited, washed, swept, or blown off intentionally or inadvertently. Onto any impervious surface, public right-of-way, swimming bath drain, ditch, conveyance, or water.
That's my fault.
If you're interested, if not, then there's really not much we can do because we don't have any.
I have one issue with this, and that is. Who's gonna be the police authority on this?
Stu?
Somebody calls up over here on.
But anytime.
Fairground or something like that.
I mean, we didn't put anything in here, I think probably on purpose, because we didn't know that person.
No.
It's the same person that's telling all the trucks not to drive through.
Okay, so.
Well, if you don't, if you don't have anything, then you really.
You can't say anything.
Can't say anything when we're in there, and it's extremely dangerous. So, at least if it's in there, if the person comes in and the other person's complaining about it. Then you have a leg to stand on. If you don't, then it's kind of like, well, I don't know, y'all fight it out.
That's true, and it's also true that the majority of people, if they know that's a little, a little vague. You know, you won't have to send a cop out.
Mr., Mr. Tony.
Maybe not.
I tell you, I've never seen him mow a property without blowing it back onto the grass. Never. Like, every, every single property I ever see him do, he blows it back onto the grass. And that's all it takes, even when you're push mowing, you can literally take your push mower on the road and back on the grass. And I don't have a problem, so I know that when somebody found something, it was in reference to, um. Like, the water that's off of the grass, I have no problem with that. This is not a, um, a fertilizer issue for me. This is just the safety of motorcyclists. And we do have a lot of kids who are making the dumbest decisions of their lives. On dirt bikes through town, and as much as they get on my doggone nerves, I would hate to see one on that chance.
I agree with you. I mean, it, it's true, I mean, what Vice Mayor Schuler said is absolutely correct. When someone comes into my office to make a complaint, that's the first thing I say to them is, I have to make sure there's an ordinance against what you're complaining about. If I don't have an arch, there's nothing I can do. So, this has to be the first step, if we really don't want people to be doing this, we have to have something to be able to say, you can't do this, and this is why.
Okay. Listen, ma'am, did we ever do anything by doggone on this?
Yeah, we've done.
So, we were talking about that, so, so you can't have one.
Put everything in the wind.
Only.
Put everything in the wind.
On non-state roads.
Non-state.
County.
County roads, just city roads.
And put your flashlight on it, duct tape it on the front.
So, you can ride the wind?
You can't go like across twenty-seven, twenty-four, anything that's a state road, you can't do. Has to be a city.
City street.
Or tree.
For instance, this past weekend. One of the ones that was here that was asking to get that gun. I found her about four miles down the county road. Carla and about five head of youngsters, she had them out, they went to get it, and I drove right on by. And, 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 and in your county, in the leading county, I won't do it. That's exactly what you just said, y'all be careful. Drive off. But you can't drive around twenty-seven.
No, more twenty-four. Technically, you're not even.
This is not the bill. And we don't want that.
Okay, I make, make a motion that we accept ordinance number twenty-four dash six.
I see. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor, signify the same eye. Move it.
Doing that.
Franklin, can y'all hear me?
Yep.
Tyler?
Yeah, I can hear.
All right, y'all wanna vote on that?
I'm good with it.
Franklin, how about you?
Yes.
He said yes.
And then these are all for free.
Yeah, just give me a moment, okay. I agree with that, cool answer. All right, motion here.
All right, uh, next up is first reading of ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven. An ordinance to amend and supplement the provisions of existing ordinance twenty-one oh four. As codified and to allow occupancy of a recreational vehicle on site where the owner has obtained a building permit for dwelling or dwelling-related construction and providing. So, again, the only thing that's changed, if you look at section four, we basically took this from the county. It says, a property owner may reside in a recreational vehicle on site during the time the building permit is active. For the construction, renovation, or setup of a dwelling on a property. I will tell you that, um, I had a, not a resident, but a concerned. Property owner, that's, that's, I'll use that, concerned property owner that called me today and was not very happy about this. Because he felt like we should give them a timeframe. It shouldn't leave it open, but I'm gonna leave that up.
I thought it was, they're only there allowed to be there. On site during the time, they have to have an existing building permit, so once the permit is up. That's it.
But Rachel said that she was gonna need eighteen months to build this house.
And actual building permit lasts a year, it lasts a year.
It's six months. It's six months.
No, the building permits last a year.
Yeah.
No, building permits last a year, because I don't.
Yeah, he said six months today, whether or not he's right or not, but that was his.
Yeah, building permits last a year.
So, they have to get re-upped or whatever.
And re-up after a year.
So, that was his first concern. His second concern was, and again, this is somewhat petty to me, but he was saying. Okay, so she builds the house, this is just an example, but Rachel builds the house, she's done. The RV stays on the property. What's to say that her kids or her grandmother or her neighbor isn't now living in that RV? Should we make them move the RV away from the property?
Well, what's a certificate of occupancy is issued for the home? Then it becomes illegal again?
That's.
That's weird.
But again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of speculation in this town as to, everybody thinks that because there's an RV sitting on a property.
That you're living in.
That you're living in. That is, I get them all.
Same thing with the shed. Same thing with the shed. If there's a shed on the property, somebody's living in it.
Well, in that particular case, he was living in it.
About the language that we added, or potentially added in the section four. That's an exact, uh, copy of what the county did. And that, when Tyler raised it, and we talked at the meeting about it. What he basically moved was to direct an ordinance that parallels the county, so that's what I'm doing. I mean, you have to, but that's.
I think we need to be persistent so it's not hard to confuse them, and we say one thing, they say the other.
I agree with that.
I, I think it's opening it enough that it should. It should do what you need to do for this week's.
And how, how long does this need? For the duration of the permit?
The duration of the permit, all the permits over.
If the permission revoked, or there's building stopped, or occupancy begins, then period ends.
So, if the permit is extended, then it's accepted.
So, it's opening as active.
So, you mean you can't deal for like six months and then take like thirty months off too?
You can't, you just have to re, you just have to redo the permit before the year goes. Everybody's entitled to build one house per year. They get twelve months to do it. You can build your own house. It has to be the code.
This house right here. I don't have two months, I'm gonna go on the bad.
Nine Street?
Yeah, Nine Street. Living, it's, uh, you know, they started it, they stopped it.
I don't.
That's, that's. It's.
It's a church.
Just right across the street.
It's a church. Just a church.
No, there, there, there was people living in that.
No, it's, it's a church. Are you talking about the mobile home?
I ain't talking about the church, I'm talking about the houses.
The mobile home?
Russell's. Russell's house, Russell's.
Right, Russell's sister?
The light blue trailer?
Yeah.
The only thing next to the church.
You're talking about the double wide.
That's Times Street. Okay, maybe this.
No, he said building a house. That's not only building. He said nobody is a church.
They were building a church, and it, 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 it was on and off, on and off, on and off. Uh, and I, and I understand that. And maybe this.
Lord, it's. It's a mobile home.
And I noticed that they put it up, and then nobody lived in it for a long period of time.
They had to get. Permission from the county, you know, they had to get all the.
And look, what, any houses?
Yeah, they had to do all the permits, and then they moved in. But then there was a confusion between the mom and the daughter and the.
The neighbor.
There were too many of them living in one house.
I know, I know, I made, and it looked like.
But somebody backed in then.
It looked like, and I thought somebody squatting here or something.
You know, they were talking for about six months. They backed.
It looked like somebody behind it.
You know, they bought it.
Oh.
You know, if you really wanna get into this a little more deeply, you can put along. What, what is the rationale of, of saying that people can't live in an RV? What, what, what is the, the, the public interest in providing? What are you achieving?
Safety.
Safety in my sense.
As everything, as a storm comes, uh, wind.
Then, then as a practical matter, why can you live on property where you're building a house in an unsafe area here? When some poor devil who, uh, who has a more serious problem and can only live in an RV?
Well, there, there, there's multiple.
If you look back to me, you can do whatever you want on your own property that you pay it for.
Well, what I'm saying is, if somebody, this is purely theoretical, comes to me and has that kind of situation. And shows me that so-and-so is living on a property and building a, you know, whatever it is, house, and living in an RV. And says to me, I can't, I'm gonna say, or at least think, there's a little bit of consideration about the need for protection of the law. And then why is it different in one place and the other? It's something.
Well, it's meant to be temporary, though. So, if I'm building a house, I'm gonna live in my house, I'm not gonna live in an RV. If I'm just on my land, living in a RV, that's, that's not temporary.
You're right. You're right, but I can say, why, why can't I, or whoever.
I, I'll go one step further than that. Back when I had my store out here, I used to sell.
What's somebody selling this for you?
And, uh, I had a gentleman over towards Gilchrist County calling me up my day. And, uh, he said, all right, I wanna buy that twenty-four by, twelve by twenty-four that you got out there. Eight foot, okay? So, I wrote him, we signed the papers, he come over here, wrote me a check for it, we lived it up. There's nothing, it's just out in a lot, in a field. I said, what are you gonna do with this thing out here? He said, I'm gonna live in that somewhere. And he said, you come back in six months, and I'll show you something, y'all. He had this, now, you talking about tiny house, that's a tiny house. But it had a kitchen. It had a bedroom, it had a bathroom, it did have an outside shop, but he's one of those tough guys. Here's a kitchen, she's got a pool down there. Somehow.
Right.
Somehow.
I, I, I just wonder, can that be the veteran problem going to life, not problem?
Oh, they've had major problems, don't they, watch? Because in leading counties, they say that you cannot get a power pole unless you have a structure on your property. So, how can you get a, how can you get a RV?
With this member or a RV.
Right.
How are you gonna get power?
Right. And you know what else the county says? You're not allowed to have a pole barn. Because a lot of people wanna put a pole barn out there first, which makes sense, because you can protect your stuff, your materials, you know, stuff you're gonna use to build your house. But leading county does not allow that.
And I think that's a state.
Well, you can circumnavigate all that by going out there and putting an ad pole in, and a well and everything else, by using words, ad. And I'll put it, okay, I got one.
Well, Ms. Tony got some ad going on at her house, so y'all wanna talk about this?
Yeah.
Just don't open up anymore.
No, no, I wanna, I wanna talk about what she just was saying, which makes sense. Why can't you put what you wanna put if you've involved your own property? Why can't you put something like?
Cause.
Who, who is?
I'm all for it, I'm all for it to the point where I, I spent my morning in the basement at the courthouse looking up. Ways for six sixty-seven Marshburn to not get their shed torn. I'm telling you, when I say I'm for it, I'm for it. I think whatever you, when you buy your property, I think you should be able to do what you want to on it. It's the American way. So, what?
Tell somebody to play about it.
Why are you saying you can't do it? Sorry? Why, why are you saying you can't do it?
I did?
It's the law.
Oh, shit, I'm not saying.
It's the law.
What law?
It's a state law.
You know, just like, Mr. Elijah. You know, when you get in your car and you just wanna ride, and your foot hits that, that gas pedal? And you getting it going about eighty-five, ninety, but on twenty-seven, it says fifty-five, so you got to slow that thing on down, no matter how good your foot feel. It's the same way.
I'm talking about how.
It's a state law. It hasn't, the city, it's a state.
So, the state tells you all that you can't do it?
There is.
That what you're saying?
States, Florida states, you cannot permanently live in an RV in the state of Florida. You can live in an RV for a couple of months, move it for twenty-four hours, and come right back. And that is a state law.
Well, you got a lot of RVs that you don't even see right now.
Hey, I'm living RV, I don't care what people are RVing. I'm just telling you, people get mad at us like, we're gonna break the laws, and that RV is a state that makes.
What's good for one should be good for everybody.
It's a state law, permanent on first reading.
Do what now?
Permanent on first reading?
Yes, for the only one, yes, first reading. So I'll entertain the motion to a new report.
You said that the only part that changed was section four. Section four lines up with the county.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty-one oh four.
Twenty-four oh seven.
What is it?
Twenty-seven oh seven.
Twenty-four oh seven. My second.
All right, we got a motion in a second, all those in favor, say if I would say aye.
I would say aye. That's the ordinance as a minimum.
Close. Frank, then you're timer, we're in the poll.
No.
Do you have any... You have a bar. You don't need to be here.
Well, one of them is, well, both of them is safe. We don't want, we don't want to be...
All right, you good with that then?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with it.
Okay. Motion carries, next, shoot.
Okay, next is, now we're gonna get into the really fun stuff. FMIT commercial insurance renewal. All right, you've got the email from Lindsay Johansson. That is our, um, account executive over at FMIT. So as you'll recall, Vice Mayor Schuler asked us back in May to, well, maybe go back on. Remember writing out, "We currently are insuring all of our property in the town of Bronson for roughly four million dollars." We had an asset survey that was done back in, um, February. It said we were underinsured, that all of our insurance should have been slightly over ten million dollars. So, you know, roughly sixty percent underinsured. So we asked them to do a loss policy limit of five million, seven million, which they never got back to me. And then they just came back and said, "Sorry, we asked underwriting about this and they're not able to do it for any cities below thirty million." So because our total insured value is only ten million, they're not willing to make this concession for us. So, I gave you a couple of options, because obviously, um, the property insurance is what's really, really expensive right now. These are my options that I came up with. First and foremost, Lindsay said write me an email. And, you know, as a licensed insurance agent, I will say this is the first thing I always used to say too, is you can, you know, double your deductible. So right now we have a name storm deductible of five percent. You can double it all the way up to ten percent. That will bring the premium down, uh, roughly eleven thousand dollars. Right now, the, the budget is off about fourteen thousand. So that would combat about roughly eleven of the fourteen thousand. So that's one option. The second option is we can either self-insure some or all of our property, depending on what you guys wanna do. So like Wendy gave me an example last week, like, what if we decide we only wanna insure the fire station? Because it's our newest building and that's the one that's probably the most expensive of everything we have. Let's say we decide we just wanna insure that. That's an option. The other option is we can move just our property insurance. We can keep everything else where it's at. We can keep the GL, the work comp, the auto, the cyber liability, the FMIT, and move just the property insurance. So I did talk to Bronn and Brown, they're the ones who gave us a quote two years ago. Um, I just provided them with our policy or, um, loss runs and asked them to give us a quote for just property only. That's all. They're not great, I mean, I'll be honest with you. None of these are great. I was not very happy that it took them three months to come back and say, "Sorry, I know you asked for that three months ago, we can do it." That's not great customer service, so... Anyway, so yeah, so if we were to take the ten percent deductible, the premium would go to, um, from a hundred and thirty-three thousand down to about a hundred and twenty-two thousand for all five of those properties. And again, as I said before, when I started here three and a half years ago, our total premium for all five of those properties was about fifty. So we've now gone from fifty to, right now it's a hundred and thirty-three thousand. So, if people wanna know why we have to raise their taxes, that is a huge reason for it because it's two and a half times more expensive than it was four years ago.
And those five pieces of property are here.
Um, well, if you look at the schedule of everything we have, you gotta remember, that's everything. So that's like the light at the park and the benches and the, all of the buildings, all of the light pole. But anything in this town is on that schedule. Yeah, I don't remember how many, it was like sixteen pages or something.
Over the old water tower, the sewer plant, new water tower. You got this building, you got Town Hall building, you got the park.
Library.
Library.
How about, uh, what about self-insuring the park for everything but liability?
It's awesome. I mean, we're, we're open to whatever you guys wanna do. And like I said, it's...
And then the next question is, do we have, what kind of insurance do we have on the, where the sewer plant is at?
I mean, what kind of...
Do we have just liability or do we have...
No, we have property on everything. Everything is on...
Total language?
Everything.
Is there floating tiles on the park?
I don't think so, no.
What about elimination, I mean, I mean, uh...
I read them out. Round the wrap, speak a little bit. I'm sorry?
What's gonna eliminate the sewer plant? So? I mean, all they can do is go pick it up.
I thought the sewer plant was elimination.
I'd get rid of Town Hall. If we get rid of Town Hall and the library. Because if you have a category two storm come through here, those buildings are going to disappear anyway.
The library?
Basically, uh...
Is it the main concern fire?
Probably liability at the park.
They will, they will go like a matchstick.
Old water tower.
But you're insured.
Right. Let it go fast.
I was making, they got the buildings, I'm just, I'm talking about the non-building properties. You know what I'm saying? Uh...
No, it's your money?
Because in reality, like that sewer plant, what can go wrong out there? You know what I'm saying?
Only building that there is the shed where, you know, they keep some of the supplies. But it's not anything.
And then the water plant, I mean, the, uh...
The new water tower, the only thing is that inside the little blue building, the bulk of the little buildings, you know, you got your panel, control panel.
Light will come in and...
I mean, and I, you know, lighting it, yes. And so, I mean...
I mean, I'm still a prisoner of water.
I mean, if Town Hall went up with the plane, how much would they pay us?
Town Hall? That one back there is worth more than this, man.
I think it was like three hundred thousand.
On paper? On paper?
Isn't that an historical building?
Yeah, but that's three hundred thousand, you're not gonna build a new Town Hall for... Well, you gotta remember, that was replacement cost on that. That's the whole point, is remember the fire station wasn't really one point eight million, it's like three million. Because that's the rebuild cost right now. Even though the grants were one point eight million six years ago. That's the problem. Is the cost of everything is so much higher now.
It's kinda like upside down with cars.
We'll put an RV there.
That is shit.
With no setbacks.
Sheer, Sheerkey's been doing this for years, I mean, they get flooded out everywhere.
And what do they do? They insure it?
They move, go to the top, move.
I bet some people pay their insurance in Sheerkey.
They move to higher ground, start over.
They gonna be swimming with them, uh...
There's no way, there's no way that they can insure their stuff in that right there because that's in the flood insurance. I'll tell you.
No, I imagine.
If you think that's hot?
Yeah, but their flood policy would be... That's wrong.
I mean, it's just like down in Yankee Town in English and Sheerkey, all of them trying to, you know, to ensure their, in Crystal River, yeah, it floods down there, time's tight, don't you think? I seen the city hall, I seen the city hall in Crystal River, go there, in the city hall. And then it had a stall, it was just a full moon, he doesn't be moving, it's like personal highway.
We could not insure any of it. Just move the Town Hall to the fire department and make it the official Town Hall slash EOC. And then get grants for the EOC. And run everything out of the EOC. Just like...
Jeff says, Jeff says, no.
No. I love that you, I love that you fire college, you can do also about me, I'm a graduate of fire college.
Okay, pleasure to counsel.
Man, I know this is a tough decision, honestly. You just lost the rest of your people because the computer rebooted. That's awesome.
How about, how about this? We gotta make a decision on this.
Well, as luck would have it, one of our grants right now requires a certificate of insurance. And I asked them to write today and they said, "I need to know whether or not you guys are insured." If you're doing your renewal with us or not, I was like, oh, not a word. So, I would probably, for now, I would probably vote to take the ten percent norms, name storm deductible. So, we still have insurance, we can get our, you know, COI that we need. And then let's just wait and see what Bronn and Brown comes back with. They told me they probably try and have something due in like two weeks. So looking for the next council. I don't know, I, I, I don't know. But I mean, that's at least something for now. I mean, it's...
I'm not saying...
You're not self-insuring, you still have insurance, it's just a really high...
You're not a fan of Bronn and Brown?
I'm not a fan of theirs either, but...
I've dealt with twenty-five years.
Now, what is option, what's it, is there another option besides it?
So start tricky stuff.
Um, yeah.
But I mean, I think we can also make that decision down the, you know, you...
What, the table is broken?
Well, you ought to make that decision today, you can't think about it, watching, self-insure.
How about we look at this, did, you know, say, does this books or the... This books?
I think I have, if you guys wanna see that, I have a copy.
I, I don't have it, you sent it to me, I have a copy.
Yeah, I did, I did.
All right. So what's your recommendation here? Just go ahead and take it and then we go ahead?
Take the ten percent for now and let's just see what Bronn and Brown comes back with.
I'm moving, do we take the ten percent option three? With FMIT?
I understand.
We got a motion in a second? Frank, then you're down, I got it?
It's gone.
It's gone.
It's gone. I don't believe it. All right, uh, we got a motion in a second, all those in favor, say if I would say aye.
All right.
Who's motion carries?
Really fun stuff. All right. Now it's gonna get easier. So, next up in your packet is two grant applications that Shannon Williams submitted for us on Friday. The first is a brick grant to build a culvert in the area of four thirty Margaret Street. Total cost is about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we worked a big tower on that cost projection. And you gotta remember, I know that we talked about other cul, meeting other culverts in town. These projects had to be on the, um, LMS list, the loss, uh...
Is this about the lift station?
Margaret Street is...
So lift station there is, uh, probably like four thirty-one is just past the lift station. Where they complaining about the water coming off the GL. You got a guy that's across from four twenty-one that's right by the lift station. Sending the water coming off his flood and his...
Okay.
You know, he's sent us lots of pictures of how...
I think he just bought that property like maybe two, three years ago.
Yeah, something like that. He owns that and then the lot next to it, the Baker...
Yeah, the Baker lot, he owned that also.
So, it's, it's, it's a long shot, but we just put in for it. And then the second one is another brick grant, this is the one that I'm much more, I hope we really get this done. Um, this is for a generator for the Stevens Street lift station. And as Curtis has told us many times, this is our main lift station in town and we don't have a generator for it. So this one is sixty-five thousand dollars. I have no idea where she came up with that figure. I hope that's enough, because it sounds really low to me, but...
Yes, that's for the generator, but then for the transformers and all that, you have another, yeah.
And keep in mind, if you do get these, these are seventy-five, twenty-five, these are not a hundred percent on footings. So we still have to pay twenty-five percent and then whatever Curtis is saying, we have to put on top of that, so... But it's better than having to be a little...
Um, do you know when they make the decision? Um, when they approve you or not?
I want you to find out.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Why haven't we talked about culvert for Glover Street for that church with all that water running down the road?
I put it on, I just told Ms. Two about it. Um, I had told her about school street to begin with because it gets pretty bad. And then I was thinking about Glover Street in front of the church and in front of your house. And she's already working on it.
These have been on that list for a while?
Only thing with, with Glover Street, I think, remember before they paid you the parking lot? I don't know if it was going, it was, it used to be like a little retention fund there. So when they did away with that, there's nowhere for the water to go. Retention fund now is on the backside of the parking lot.
There's water everywhere down there. The water does it right back there.
I'm saying, there's nowhere for it to go.
You can go right down, look, it'll be water. Oh yeah, there's water everywhere. And it's so bad that you might as well go on several...
You could be on a culvert, I'm gonna be honest with you. I used to work with that. It's a way, you know, sign it up, for you to make that culvert, that water, uh, what they have to do is drill onto the road.
Yeah, you put, still go, still go.
Make sure that retention bond. And it could be done.
But I think he's saying, I think he's saying because it's in the valley of the road, that it's gonna go off into either your property or into the property of the church, it's one of the other.
No, it wouldn't. It's not right. So, if, 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 if here's a culvert here, here's a little road right there by, uh, the culvert right here, if you, in order for that, see where a culvert is, you don't know.
I know where the culvert is.
It's not a big two.
But the culvert has to go lower than the street. And the street is lower than your property, that's the reason why it's hold the water there, right?
No, not my property, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the water that's in that road. All you got to do is build that culvert, drill underneath that road, to that retention bond, that's already there. And the water on that.
What's happening in the list you just gave me? That list of culvert?
There's no culvert.
Oh, this is Brandon.
Yeah, but it's, I think it's, someone that is thrifty with culverts would need to go and check it out because the elevation of where that is located is gonna probably be the number one issue. Because the road is lower than the property.
I, I will, I will say this, Mr. Elijah.
Come on.
We cannot, we cannot take a public street and divert and dump water onto a personal property.
You're not dumping water on a personal property. They got the retention bond.
If you, you cannot even put it into their retention bond, unless it's ours. State of Florida has all these retention bonds, one down twenty-seven.
Recording in progress.
The reason why they aren't is because they cannot dump that water. It's only going to... And that's just illegal, bongo jumbo, okay?
You got it, Rick?
I, I, I'm not, I'm not... I, I'll say, and if we put that culvert down there and all of a sudden you have a rain like we did today, you gotta swim out. Of course, you wouldn't have to swim out of your house, but I'm just using that for sisters.
The water might rain go that way.
I'm just saying that if, you would be disturbed, you don't want that.
Thank you.
All right, where are we at?
Okay, so just to let you know, so there was, we had four projects on the local litigation strategy list. These two, the, um, roof of the library and this area in front of the Puddle Burke building flooding. All four of those have grant applications submitted for this project. So I gave you a list on your agenda here of all of the different, um, grant applications that we have out right now. So of course, there's the Septic to Sewer project for eighteen million. The, um, expansion and upgrade of the waste bar treatment plant for twelve million. SCOP grant to resurface Gilbert Lake in Oak for a little more million. SCOP to resurface Pine Terrace, Pine Lane, Pine Drive for about half a million. And then those two other projects I just talked about, doing the drainage here and then the library, um, roof replacement. So we have approximately thirty, I just said thirty-two million, thirty...
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty-two million dollars. Thirty-two million nine hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred dollars of grant applications out right now.
The new Pine Terrace, you're saying for half a million dollars?
Yeah, to do Pine Terrace, Pine Lane, and Pine Drive is five hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Those three.
We've done it before in a way, man. Cause they didn't do it. They didn't do it right.
But they put millions down.
Correct, right.
What they paid, when they put the millions down was nowhere near that much.
Right.
But all they did was put millions down, so that's not gonna sustain ten years of traveling on it. It's just millions.
What they put down, they may have five weeks, holy shit.
But it's, it's just millions.
That's, that's like, it, it, it's definitely better than what you had. Cause there was part of those in that thing right there, you buried your part.
That one over there, Terrace, I want you, when you leave here, go right on that road. The one off of Tyre- Tyre Road, Terrace?
Live Oak Circle.
Live Oak Circle, go right on that road. That road is bad, Mr. Mike. Matter of fact, don't go on.
No, I will drink my coffee on that road, but I'm playing Pine Terrace to be, uh, to be there before.
Okay.
Okay, so last thing on my agenda is the Bronson Youth Association proposal that came in today from Jack Martell and Nicole Manning. So you've got the proposal in here. Um, I just highlighted that they already have a board in place. It consists of a president, vice president, treasurer, secretary and two additional board members. They've got all their sports commissioners in place for football, baseball, softball, soccer, cheerleading and basketball. I'm not sure if I understood when they said planned improvements for the park include field repair and maintenance, facility upgrades, lighting and scoreboards and aesthetic improvements? Not sure what they mean by that?
I think they're talking about them doing the...
Oh, I mean, that's great. I thought they meant us.
Probably being us.
That's brilliant. And then they've got in their bylaws, regular meetings, special meetings, their officers, terms of office, and they have an EIN number. So they're, um, what I'm reading, they're ready to go if you guys decided you wanted to...
I would think that we would need to get a clarification on the planned improvements include list. I also think, I really, um, I really think we should give, um, the Lambs a notice.
No, I agree. We have to give them sixty days to like the agreement anyway. I mean, this just came in, I just wanted you guys to have something to look at.
I think the reason why I say that is because when this all came out this time, it was in the middle of them accepting registration fees. I don't want that to ever happen again.
Okay.
Because when we have issues, you know what I mean? Some people have already paid their money and then, you know, we have no control over that, so, um...
I mean, this is my personal opinion, again, you guys are gonna do what you wanna do, but I think that because this goes through February first, our current year-to-year, whatever you wanna say, if you decide you wanna change, I would probably just tell Bronson Youth Sports February first. You know, I mean, give them enough time to play the next season or whatever they have, you know? And then I would ask these people to come in and make a presentation in person. I mean, yeah, there's definitely, I mean, I'm not advocating making a decision tonight, I just want you to...
These people was at the meeting yet?
So Jack Martell was at the workshop?
Destin was at that one? That's the one that was in there for the laptop?
And then she is the skinny one?
That was over there running?
And then the dad was the one that stood up and said, okay, with a piece of paper and said, so what are our solutions? What's the deal?
That's Jack Martell?
That's Jack Martell.
Yes, they were sitting in that row in front of Mr. Curtis.
Yeah.
And then Destin was the one in the back with the laptop. And that man that was next to her was not her husband. I scored the nine, they were close to me and watched it while they were talking and stuff. But then I, I did.
And she owns, she owns like four or five businesses. He's a lineman.
Destin?
No.
No, Jack.
Jack and his wife.
Yeah, and, and so, uh, I had asked one of my son's coaches that I trust hands down, like, I, I've seen this man work magic. I've seen him pull rabbits out of hats that I didn't know existed when it comes to kids. And I had asked him to sit down in the meeting. And he sat in the meeting, um, and he also told me later on that he would be able to give some advice to anybody that was starting up a five oh one C three. But he just could not do it because he already has one and he did not want to co-mingle anything. Um, but he would definitely be open to...
Give it to them.
Working with a new group. And the only reason why I say a new group is because mentally, I'm like, we can't afford to lose any more kids. We just can't. We, I, I, we already struggling. And then, um, the first thought I had when Mr. Taylor left was like, oh my God, how can we get those kids back? This plan would include him coming back and bringing those players with him.
Right.
So in my head, I'm like, okay.
You know, we have, we have a soccer club, I bet, I reckon is the best way to describe it, that is out there right now. They're not part of Bronson Youth League.
Yes.
They're just beat up out there. The parents are providing the funds for, I know that they're not, they're not, they were supposed to be there tonight to get their uniforms and everything.
Yeah, they were...
That's what I'm saying. They did, they did come.
Yes.
But they're not part of Bronson Youth.
My check that I wrote says we are. They're a part of it. Yes.
Yeah.
They're a part of Bronson. They're a part of that. So what people are getting confused is their parents who actually purchase things on their own. So a lot of, and they go out there on their own, which, you know, a lot of parents just don't do that. Um, but that's...
Like they did at clinic, they did at camp. And that they did on their own. You know, but they, their soccer teams are a part of it.
And they bought a lot of materials themselves. They bought a lot of sporting equipment.
The, the whole thing I knew was that tonight, they were supposed to all meet up out there. They were supposed to get all their brand new uniforms and the kids.
And, and I do wanna add that this impresses me that they're doing that, have Destin as an acting board member. Because I don't know her personally, but I would want her like under me or next to me or by me because she was giving them real deal advice and it was not being taken like that.
Yeah, because she was, like you said during that entire meeting, she was not rude, she was not disrespectful. She was giving them criticism, like critical, but on point criticism. And she was not rude and she was like, we need to improve these things. And they just, they kept shut down, shut down, shut down. And she was being honest.
Okay. It would have to be, um, if you were gonna let them finish, basketball's not done until like March first, end of February, cause they have their little tournaments and stuff at the end. So I'm just saying that we have to make sure...
As long as you give them sixty days, but you...
Right, so then my question would be, if they're gonna do that, then wouldn't they? How do you do baseball and softball that starts right after that?
I would, this is my personal opinion, is I would let David and Angela know that you can finish out the two registrations you have. So where they, I guess you're not really doing football and then basketball. And then you give it, say you guys are no longer doing baseball or softball association with the city. That is now going to them and have them start with softball and baseball. And that'd be their first season as BYA.
That makes sense. I got one more question. Can we do that though? What stops them from still continuing to be their own league?
They can't. They just won't get funding from us and then it'll become a competition.
But this is gonna be the problem if they try to use the field, so.
But they won't have direct access to the fields. It will be the Bronson Youth Association. It'll be whoever gets the contract, right?
For them, if they still try to, to have an organization, what do we have a place to stop them from using the field? Just like you just said, it's a soccer team out there practicing that's not a part of David and... You're gonna have a conflict here.
So I, I mean, it, it would have to be the understanding that when they're given their sixty days to be done, that after that point, priority goes to...
Yeah.
Whatever group you're going with, so, yeah, y'all can still, if you decide to do that, but there will be no further funding from the town and priority will be given to that group. And that needs to be, uh, that needs to be part of the sixty day notice so that they fully understand that as of March first or whatever. But Matt, I add though, that if that does happen to where it comes, it becomes a competition, then we could literally start charging for certain things. That would give us the control of having it. And they can't keep their stuff at the park either. They won't be able to keep their stuff there. But I mean, like if...
So all that need to be...
Well, a lot of that stuff belongs to us anyway, that's it.
That's all we're... Yeah, we can build our stuff. I mean, we bought it, we purchased it.
You better lock it down now.
I mean...
I don't even know.
But you know, they probably...
The other thing too is, is that I think one of your big selling things will be if BYS has the money to pay the registration fees. We pay registration fees before those regi- our lease fees. So if we're not providing that funding for those lease fees and that insurance, then...
Yeah.
Because our insurance does not cover all sports. We have to do that, we up that.
Yeah.
So...
That makes a lot of sense.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. So Mr. Jay, what you just said, you like to get the kids back, right? So now we're trying not, not giving the funding to the people anymore. How we gonna get kids back now?
No, 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 that's not what we're saying. We're saying that the people that are, so since you've been absent, we've had a couple of meetings that were like really invested in the Bronson Youth Sports. And we had situations where one of the coaches, the football coach, left and his players said, well, if you leave, we're gonna leave with you. And they went to Chief one.
Yeah.
The whole football team went to Chief one. And then we had, we had the coach that left came in here and then the Lambs came in here and they were few. We needed to do an here separate. But, um, and then we had a meeting in, in reference to the youth league. And we're not saying that we don't wanna fund the kids. We're saying, the, I don't know, I'm saying, me personally, that I think it's time that we give a notice to the people that are over Bronson Youth Sports because...
We'll see how that goes.
Okay, any other further discussion or wish?
I'd just like to see them add, if this is gonna happen, um, that we get a quarterly status of the whatever. Quarterly, bi-yearly, twice yearly, whatever, so that we're kinda kept that. Their finances is being ran by, stuff is being, quarterly, because whenever it comes an issue, it becomes our problem.
Yes.
And like, are we gonna, so do you, do we, are we gonna give any funding like we gave to Bronson Youth Sports? Or, I mean, that's something else that has to be talked about too.
Right, cause again, I only put the twenty one hundred in for the K and K insurance. That's the only thing I had in mind for next year. So that's a good question.
Are they even asking for it though? That's what I'm saying, are they, are they even asking for anything other than that?
So anything.
And, and me personally, I'm not saying that that's our only option. Cause I, I can't really believe that once we give the Lambs a notice, I feel like somebody else is gonna step up. I mean, it just, it always happens like that. But I'm not saying we have to go with these people.
Did you send the email that she sent to Shannon?
Yeah, I sent it to all of you. About from Angelo?
Yeah.
That things are getting better?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
Good talk.
I agree with that.
Alright, well, Brandon, hurry up. Okay, uh, any other further discussion or wish?
And that's all, this is for just Boris.
I mean, do you, do you wanna give me any direction as to what you wanna do? Or do you still just wanna think it over?
Alright, there we go. I'll say over that thing.
Notice.
What?
Sorry?
I say we need to go ahead and plan on giving them a notice, whether we go ahead and do that. Alright, correct, following.
I agree.
Okay.
This is like...
Also think we need to, uh, look into, let's see if we can break this better, study, uh, for our exit plan. For our, for our budget, to have some, right, uh, right, uh, for, uh, to help them out in bar and, and, and... Our, our youth sports, I'm going downhill for years compared to that. I would probably say if it's done, I mean, that was, so the car will, and they're, they're right back, it was, uh, it happened to our help.
Okay, so do you have a particular date in mind that you wanna give them the notice through?
I don't know, so you have a mic for this?
I, I, I agree with what Justin said, but I'm, I'm, I have sports there to handle the registration, not further registration, if you want, we'll do that.
I think the notice has to be consistent with the expiration of their contract.
Okay, so...
Whenever their contract expires, that the notice should be effective then and be given at least sixty days prior to that expiration.
So we could simply say that we don't plan to have it automatically renew, and the council is...
Yeah, run the language, that's me.
Okay.
We're not gonna retain your services.
Okay.
What is, what is the date for their contract?
I think it's February first, if I'm not mistaken, but I, it's some, sometime in February.
Wait, thank you, go on, let's take that, we have the next one.
Well, you gotta be in the middle of this, you said, you know? I mean, you're gonna be right at the end. Basketball, the tournaments are usually like the end of February, end of February. Well, they're like March there, don't they? Well, if they get rid of this, and I don't think they have yet, then this person, this is the person that fits over basketball for them, so...
Do they, do they participate in?
Yes, and Amber, um, said that this person ran basketball very well.
No, I'm talking about them, the Lambs, you know? You were... The Lambs, because it's February basketball.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the, the whole league, the, the league that they're in sets up, the schedule and all that. They don't do any of that.
Is Destin maybe she's the one that fits over their basketball?
Thanks.
She was their money person.
She's not anything...
They don't let her, they don't let her do anything.
She just does the registration. She's their registrar.
Yeah, but she's over basketball and cheerleading, those two things. And, um, yeah, they don't let her do any more. They, they penalized her and the next sporting event that they had, all of the schedules were made out by hand, on the newspaper.
Yeah, you missed, you missed a meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, what did you take when you give them their notice? Let them, I mean, I would outline it in that meeting of you are, this is the end of the contract. At the end of basketball season, X and X date, you are no longer associated with the city of Bronson. Fees will no longer be paid. You will not have priority at the park and you, you're gonna have to, we've been outlining it, bold it, bold it.
Well, in your next group, whether it's them or some other group, has gotta be ready to run with baseball, softball. Because if they're gonna be done, then the next group has to be ready to go with that.
And we should notice.
Put it in the language that whoever you all choose to take over will be starting the next sport registrations in February second. If there's gonna, there's gonna be the first, that the other person gonna be starting registration for the following sports moving forward.
I mean, you could put it on the board and make notices and simply say, they don't have a website, I imagine, don't have contact information and the city needs to put that out there as well.
I think if we don't get, um, the equipment back, you could pretty much cancel Christmas on that stuff.
You probably not. Cause see, the, the problem gonna be is the stuff that if they did get stuff from the money from the county, you know, how to differ that stuff from, I guess, the money that, unless you have invoices.
I have a list.
You know, you have invoices of what you bought with them.
Oh, I know, I knew coming in to make sure, that's why we ordered it that way.
But we might need to have a plan. But not just that, like the basketball goals and stuff that we already had before...
Yeah, I see.
They got into it, they're still using that stuff. That's, that's stuff we want back because those goals that hang on a thing are expensive.
Very expensive. I mean, I know some of this stuff, but, um...
But it's stuff that's outside, other than soccer, we could get back now because they don't, they're not gonna need them. Right?
Yeah. They shouldn't, I mean, but they, you know, the way they keep this, this stuff, I'm not talking, you know?
I mean, it's not gonna be a simple...
Equipment stuff is just...
You probably should have some of that.
But see, the blue buildings are buildings, so if we do this, we just change the locks on the door.
Give up their water.
They've seen the waters and they can't sell it.
You know, I think what you're trying to say, right, even if you're for, is that what's going on is not a negotiation.
Correct.
It's in order.
Correct.
And that's, that sort of has to be understood.
And I think that's too, that's too humble to thank you here, everybody's done, you know, it's time for change. We probably need to make sure that council is still on board.
Keep back on, they're both back on.
Franklin, do you got anything to say about this?
Uh, uh, yes.
Tom, how about you?
Yeah, you can say it.
Uh, you're saying that we're gonna give the people, uh, manage the BYAs, uh, Bronson Youth, gives me...
Yes.
A sixty day notice that we are not continuing our agreement with them after this one ends.
Uh, uh, the, the thing, what I'm thinking about is, uh, we had it at one time, a long time ago, I can probably remember. Uh, we had, we, uh, obviously, you know, uh, Tim Derrick, he, he was over there, he, he, but that, and it didn't run really decent.
But he only had softball and baseball, they didn't have, we didn't have like four, did you?
I mean, somebody else took it over there and they got, uh, got messing all around like, like it is now. And we decided that we, uh, let, I, I, let that be I, I mean, I don't know what behind Curtis been, but I know we ain't never draw. But, uh, some of the council people think they hit him off Curtis, over or something. And I find that, I tell you, if you have over, it always will be a problem. If they're not, if they're not directly with the city, I may say, I think we might get off of you with that. I'm a person to be over you. So everything we were saying really didn't really... So everything we said really didn't really, serious, private, that's what I think.
Well, for sure, we need to, I, I think it's time for a, a change of venue here because it is just a constant, constant vigor, you know? And, and you can't get anything accomplished when you're doing that. That's the question, that's all I'm gonna say about that.
The people that put in to take over, do they already have a person for each sport?
Yes.
Do you wanna see it?
No, 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 I'm just saying.
He has the packet.
Yeah, I'm saying that, that will be the, you know, so that you're dealing with that person, and you don't, you know, because if I have a love for basketball, you know. If I'm over everything, then people tend to, that's what calls some of the problems.
The gentleman, uh, Mr. Taylor is supposed to be over football?
The guy that, the big guy that was here?
Yes, sir. Um.
So we're going back to Bronson.
I still can hear him there.
Well, we need, I mean, I hadn't said, but something should have been done so that them kids never left Bronson in the first place. That's a lot of people to leave at one time.
I, I'm gonna be honest with you.
They paid free the year before.
I told Vice Mayor Schuler how strange this was, so I called Lee, what's his last name?
Oh, the one that was begging for him to come back?
Yes, I called him because Angela said to me, I'm concerned about the fact that if there's a conflict. That we have whatever practice, right, BYS has a practice at the park. And now the football people in Chief Lynn need to use, cause they're using our park also. She said, you need to make sure that Lee understands that we get priority. So I called Lee to say, just to let you know, you know, if there is a conflict, we have to obviously let the BYS have our park first. And he's like, Sue, I don't even know what you're talking about. He's like, all I know is that Coach Taylor showed up one day and had money and said, we're gonna play in Chief Lynn, but we're gonna use Bronson's park? And he was like, okay, he goes, I, I don't know what's happening over there, he's like, I don't know anything about this. He had no idea what I was talking about.
He said, maybe he did not know about.
No, but they just said that we called him two times, asking about it, oh, it's from him.
Lee literally was very confused, and he's like, yeah, he's like, I don't know what you're talking about, I'm like, well, just suffice it to say there's some problems here in Bronson, but, you know, we'll work it out. So I, I, yeah, just take that.
I, oh, let me tell you, I just want my, um, I need to sign my kid up first, um, for this year, whoever we go with, I'm gonna sign my kid up first.
I need to sign out of that, so I'm ready with you.
I'm gonna be the first one, because I've been waiting for her, but you get out there.
Be careful with your.
I'm sorry.
I, I'm dumb.
But I suggest too, is that whoever is over, you know, we have meetings twice a month, right? That at least every quarter, every two months, every month they come and report.
And don't just come ask for money.
Right.
Come and tell them what other stuff is going too.
Right, I mean, even if it is just one, one council meeting a month at the beginning of the end, they have.
There wouldn't be nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, me and Sue have already talked about it, uh, months ago, about this quarterly reports and finding.
I look forward to this, I honestly do, I look so forward to it.
Alright, Curtis, go talk to us.
Um, this quote is for, is not, not the candidate.
Yeah, this is, this is not the candidate doing this.
Sorry, I got confused.
Yeah, Sue, no, she, she was, she was.
It's my fault.
She was abused that day.
I have COVID.
She hasn't been under a lot of stress. Okay, this is, this is me, uh, and what this entails, and that is, we've got the millions that we got the other day, you know, from the repaving the road out here. And we got pretty good stock pile that, and that was two. And what I did was I just reached out to a local contractor to give us a quote on eligible tape for him to do the parking area. In the road behind the city hall, you know, where they drive through and everything, fix that washouts, everything is. And it would also be taken the millions, just like what Elijah doesn't like, but we're gonna put those in those places. It would be rolled and leveled out with a leveling machine, and it would go up to the sidewalks and everything else. So it would help with your access to getting in and out and all of those. Here, over there, yes.
You're doing drive-throughs, that's on the both streets to give us free, the one beside the town.
Where they put each, where you, the little box where you put your stuff in.
I'm gonna put my own in there.
Okay.
And after Coozie come through, I'll never go in there again from there.
Okay, and all I did was I got a quote from.
So it's just for that?
Yeah, just for that, and I just for him to come over, take out the millions that we obtained, all them over here. Box out the road, put the millions in, level them out, pack them down from one road to the other, across. So we, that drive, that would also help out for that washout and all that sand goes flush.
It was popping out the other day.
And on both sides, by the way. So, uh, Sue, what was the figure?
What was what?
What was the amount?
Forty seven fifty?
Forty seven fifty. That would be the maximum it would be, four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. He said he probably could do it for less.
Could you, could, is there any kind of limit to that level off the front parking area?
No.
No? You can't, cause that's steep.
Cause I, I tell you, I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you, the distance that you've got to go from where that wall is to that, now, we can raise that highway up.
And that's part of the grant.
And that's part of the grant, and if that happens, then we might be able to do something.
Okay.
But as it stands right now, if you run a grade from that wall down to there, it's gonna be pretty steep. Yeah, you can text, the kids will love that place with skateboards.
Then somebody get out the.
Exactly, yeah, you get out in a wheelchair or something like that.
It's kinda inclined now, cause I feel like I'm talking.
You'll get, you'll go from the city hall to, to the buildings on it real quick, so. And that's all it was, it was just a idea, a concept of what it would cost. Now, to do this properly, do we have to bend this out, Sue?
I mean, you may wanna get other quotes, you know, since it's the only thing we have.
Why are you making that noise?
It's some kind of spider-like mosquito looking bug, it was just over on his stuff, and then it flew off.
I told you to go over there. So, uh, we need to get, uh, another quote, is that what you're going with?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that. Alright, moving around the lawn.
Um, you know, in the ground of the lawn, a lot of stuff was put in twenty sixteen. And over the last three months, we using, putting in two pro months the last three months, so. It's coming at the end of their cycle, um, and it's not good, it's not good. So we did order, some of my, we just have to operate it, so.
Okay.
So, um, I talked to Mark yesterday, he, he ordered a panel for the skating system, and so next two weeks he should, uh, do the skating system.
So, ahead.
Huh?
Uh.
Can we make work group?
Yes.
But, um, class gonna be Monday, Monday, tonight, the tenth, and Fernando should be qualified to take that over, you know, like.
You do.
Doing the training twice a day.
Yeah, I'm training them actually. I passed, passed Curtis the second day coming back.
You're it.
So, alright, alright, thank you. And I'd like to get him on, getting on these water leaks that we've been having there, getting done very quickly. They didn't, they got haven't fixed today so quick that they didn't have like a chance to call me.
Oh, listen.
Oh, they called town.
Oh, they called town.
You do, I hear phone calls. Especially where that one was at, so.
Is this all from the water being off before, or we just like randomly, it's like?
Say it again.
Is this from, I know she said, they said before that people didn't, uh, let their water run some type of.
That, that has, a lot of times when there's water, when you lose water pressure, and. See, for example, especially on the customer side a lot of times, but on our side, if the line is already dripping or have a drip, when the air get in the line, it's gonna.
Oh, cause there was a leak.
And, and pressure coming back all the time, that makes sense.
So that's why we used to, you know, when we had the leak of them, they had the watershed off, we went around and opened up hydrants, to relieve some of the air pressure. And it was, there was a lot of air in the line, cause it took a while, once I opened the fire, up on that second court, it probably took ten minutes for the water. You know, just air was just blowing out like a fan.
Oh, wow.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Jeff.
Don't look at you yet.
Jeff wants to be first now.
Moving, moving along up there, having some personnel changes, so things are working out. Um, as far as last month goes, we had a twelve hundred and. We're at ten calls. And there's over twenty different categories, basically seventy one of those were the. Straight EMS, total seventy seven when you look at car accidents and other injuries. So, other than that, we only had eleven canceled, hundred, let's see, seven fire, seventy, seventy seven beds, so. We're up a little bit from the previous month, we had ninety five last month, or a hundred and ten, so. We have only two incomplete reports, they started it and just didn't finish it, so. Since we know who, who did it, we're getting them straightened out real quick, so. Other than that, we're going along, we're still working on, I talked to number four electric on our generator issue. And they gave me three options, and basically it looks like we're just gonna have to have two separate generators, just from the cost. And otherwise, we're gonna have to change the electric panels in the station and put in a dry transformer in between. And he said it would be kinda.
Excellent.
Cost prohibitive, and it's also gonna cause an imbalance in the voltage.
Is this like dinner racks?
Yeah, bigger ones.
Yes, sir.
Um, cause they're looking at a forty KW or larger for the fire station, and I don't have a firm one on what's gonna run the wells. Well, it's got a sixty horse pump down in it, so it's probably gonna be a pretty good size generator. Um, we have two quotes, one from an engine collector, and I just lost that one, sorry for the mess. But, uh, supposed to get those back over this week, we don't have any idea what cost these things would be, so. If we can afford both of them, you know, we'll talk to Sue about it, power play our party, we'll be putting on the fire station. And at least have that facility ready in case something happens with the power. Um, the only thing would be, we just would have the sprinkler system up, hopefully we won't have the staff down there only issue, something was to happen. So, as soon as I get information back on those two things, I will let you all know what it is. Just everybody's concerned with, just, with one's a standard house, one's twenty two forty, and the others, they, uh, two seventy seven, four eight. So, they look at putting, uh, giving one phase a three phase on the fire station, he said that the imbalance would be off, that it would really. Probably cause more issue with electric on the building, so he didn't recommend that way to go with it. So this was the same engineer who's been all the, number four, like the water being through the building and well, so, he's very familiar with it. That's really what we said with that.
If you need somebody else to come for a quote, um, City Electric might know somebody in our area.
Okay.
And Chief Lynn.
Yeah, can't find folks with a lot of commercial stuff because we start putting transformers and stuff along with. It's like we sold your cat?
Yes, sir.
Do the county give them to you? Cheers. That's good. Like roasting the rural, do you like roasting?
Um, I think the rural ones do.
Chief Lynn.
They might, with their smaller office, with their boardroom, I'm not sure, what do they have down in Morrison?
There's a reason for my madness here.
Yeah, kinda led into that.
Okay, we kind of, we happen to know somebody at least, so, yeah, we'll check into that, okay.
So, other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Warren?
Nothing specific, really, sir.
You've had enough, I think, for our. Uh, basically, what Curtis and I talked a lot of doing is about the only thing I've got to say, uh. Everything, uh, moving along importantly, and I appreciate their efforts on everything. Ms. Sharon?
Oh, wait, wait, one thing, um, I put a Facebook post out there today about the fact that we have a contractor, Mr. George Evans, is working with Curtis right now. On doing the lead line inventory, so if you guys get calls, cause we got two calls today at city hall, and then people called and said, hey, somebody replaced my water meter. And I was like, hmm, nope, we're not on that project yet, so people are confused, they hear so many different things.
We actually have two contractors, uh, got, that were.
But meters was different today because, um, Celeste and, who was riding with Celeste?
George Evans.
Yeah, they came to my meter today, so it was funky.
Yeah, that must've.
It was not, it, well, it's not what you usually see, because usually you see the gator pole up and then with the wind out, and that's not, they had two full-sized trucks that took up that whole side of the road.
Yeah, he has to dig up and actually look and see if it's level, they have to identify.
He has to look at the, the customer side and the city side.
Oh, okay.
He has to dig up four hundred of that.
Yeah.
You're gonna be, you're gonna get all kinds of phone calls.
Yeah, people are gonna be very confused as to what's happening.
Get prepared.
And the other guy, he's doing the same, he's.
Yeah, yes, the project that he's working on, um, it's funded through Florida Water Association, they're actually paying them, so they're kinda, really are, you all didn't know this, but it's down, you know, there's a couple of middle person. But he had to go through all of the different, um, water lines first and see anything that was older, or sort of newer than whatever.
Nineteen eighty, wait, seventy eight, seventy eight.
Because anything that's newer would not have led, so, like, the last four years, anything older than that, now he has to go and actually look at it, so he has to dig up.
Oh, yeah, mine was eighty-two.
I'm trying to remember that one.
Mine is male, eighty-two, we're the same age, we're in the.
So, I mean, so you get calls, they're not replacing water meters, they're trying to determine if there's red lines.
And the other guy, he's, um, determining getting, making sure that they have all the fittings for the ones to change it out.
The commercial meters for ABM, cause that is gonna happen in the next couple of months also. So, it's gonna be very confusing, like, because George is doing both residential and commercial, and just checking stuff, and then ABM's gonna be changing out the commercial. So there's gonna be a lot of people working with Curtis the next month.
Did you put that in the news, like?
I didn't, I put, uh, I put the commercial meters, I didn't put the lead line in the line. But then we're gonna send out the, um, water line to tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Sharon?
Right. Well, we already talked about the park, we already beat that horse together, so, um, I was really about the other thing I had.
How far was she, do it out there about now?
Oh, man, just raining.
Is he swimming out there?
He's swimming.
Yeah, somebody asked why we put the signs out there.
That's awesome.
I really wish, I really wish now that we had one video, so I could have shown you all what they, so that kids out there have made.
Sunny afternoon, I, I, you know, I mean, I, I thought I had. I seen something very unusual, I seen a, a man and a woman. And there were only people in the park, a white, small white vehicle, and I could not get the tag gun off of it. The restroom, is the bins on the right? The females on the.
No, that's the off, yeah.
Okay, that is, cause the woman come out of this one over here, yeah, she had a satchel, okay? First of all, that kinda caught my eye right there, she's carrying a, like a gym, you know, like a bag, like that you carry stuff in. She came out there, I went by, I went down, made my loot, you know, and when I come back by, they backed up and took off real fast. To the point that they were jumping those B-bunks, and I'm talking about they were, they were getting airborne. B-bunks, and I'm talking about, they were, they were getting airborne, boom, boom, and I thought, well, I think I interrupted something. But I don't, I, I don't, I mean, we didn't have any damage or anything out there. It's, it's like I said, you, e- every time I go out there, it's just like figuring out the situation, what, and where was that all? It was still there. The aliens have landed out there or something. So, okay. Next deal is, uh, Tyler, you got anything?
No, sir.
Get the feeling better.
Uh, Thomas Jeff probably get here, but, uh, tell whoever reported to the Russian fire, Williston, or not Melis, thank you, I got a text from Russian Fire, Williston Fire, fire, April, April. That's when they showed up.
I got a phone call, I'll send on that Jeff.
I heard you.
Yeah. Appreciate it, Tyler, Mr. Jim, get the feeling better, buddy.
All right.
Mr. Jim?
Um, well, since he was talking about the Williston fire, it's, it's, that is under investigation, so if you see something, say something, we need to be telling people that, if you see something, say something. They've lost several restaurants, and that, that fire is under investigation, so. Well, they've lost restaurant after restaurant after restaurant. So, like I said, if you see something, say something. Um, so the, uh, Levee County Historical Society is having a yard sale on October the fifth. Um, it's gonna be right there on that building, they're doing tables for ten dollars. Um, uh, it says, early callers may receive the use of a set of table and folding chairs. So, um.
Where it's gonna be?
Right there at the historical center.
Oh.
It's in Boston, so.
That's brick budget up there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But it looks like it's gonna be, it looks like it's gonna be quite a bit of people there, so, couldn't have been once again involved, um.
That's what I was thinking of, what'd you call it, a yard sale, what'd you?
It's a yard sale, that's what it is. Um, it was in their newsletter. Trying to think, I had something else, I'm, I'm super excited about the Levee's League stuff. I'm so glad to be turning a new chap- chapter, um, and I can't wait to see what any other, um, organization will bring.
That's it. All right, Mr. Franklin, got anything?
Yeah, I just, uh, the cemetery is like, when they did the best, it, it, it turned out pretty good. And, uh, I was concerned now about, uh, a gate, was it a paint entrance? I don't know if people are going out there or not, telling the city, I think you might, if, if that keeps happening, you might need to do something.
It was a little white car parked there, I didn't think of it. Did you sit there, right there? Right when you come into the gate, when you come into the fence, right there off to the left, they were just sitting there the other night.
Who in my life?
You know, it was a little small four-door.
Okay.
Not just like a Corolla type car, something like that, just sitting there, but they weren't, you know, it's like, kinda weird.
Good night.
But by the time I went inside and came back out, they, they, they left.
Did they get the, the three up that was in the pit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was up there then, yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
They got the pins all the way around, y'all, just get a chance to go out and look at it.
Yeah, yeah. All right, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, uh, Logic, you want to say anything?
I would, you're the only public here.
All right, we'll have to test for bills, and take a motion, Phil.
Hold on, you have to ask, what is governmental services group?
GSG is your fire assessment, but they have to do all the legal, illegal stuff that we have to do every year to do that.
And Ferguson Water Works, what's that?
Equipment, uh, water equipment, Ferguson, O'Callaghan.
Okay.
Like our balance and stuff, right, from there?
Yeah, the balance, the balance.
Yeah, repair vans.
Is water program, Logic?
Water program approved, I think, in the last bills. The bills were kinda screwy this month because everybody was sick, so some of the bills you guys approved last week, and then cause now we have that week there, you won't see as many bills, but now, next week, you'll see a whole bunch of bills in.
I do forget to add something, so almost, almost every other day, somebody around town asks me, why are we hiring people from outside the town of Bronson? So I do wanna say that, um, if the majority of the people here want us to hire within the city when we can, I think that that needs to be respected, and.
Respectfully, I will tell you now, because I will not hire somebody with zero experience because they're from the town of Bronson, and hire somebody from Williston or Gainesville that has the experience I need, that's just.
That's just you. Why don't my council up here evaluate that, still just you?
It's not just me.
So, but the thing about it is, is, is that if the council has a way that they wanna do business, then it has to be followed, because the council is speaking for the people, the council is speaking for the residents of this town, and when you look at the way money is obtained and then spent, they're gonna spend it back where they live.
That would be, the only people that we haven't hired in the town of Levee County has been your interns.
I'm not saying in every instance, but I'm, I'm saying, somebody comes up to me and says something to me about it at least twice a week.
I hear that. Well, it's not like you're hiring somebody every day, okay, I mean.
Okay, well, I will address it because I know that this is obviously about Fernando, so I will address that. First of all, it is very hard to hire any new supervisor, okay, first of all, they cannot be female. Probably half the people that apply, I can't even interview them if I wanted, because that's, comes directly from Lancaster. Curtis and I tried that the first go-around, we had somebody who was a correctional officer at Lancaster, wanted to take our position, and they said, no, it cannot be female, so right there, that's half the people eliminated. Secondly, we have agreed that we would like somebody who has experience, we don't want somebody who's, you know, and we get people all the time that apply and they, you know, are cashier at Wendy's, or they work at Walmart, or, or whatever, we want people who have some experience as a correctional officer, if we can get somebody. And so that is a very limited number of people, you're not talking about, especially, in Bronson, I mean, how, how many people that would even be, but you know, these are not, we don't have, when I say that there might be thirty or forty people that apply, I don't mean they're all qualified, by any means, I mean, that's just who applies. I mean, we might have, I mean, we always try to interview, no matter what the position is, we try to interview at least three or four people. And we pick the best of, you know, what we've gotten, that's what we, we go with, and we interview them, and we always interview if it's public works, it's Curtis and I, if it's somebody for the office, it's Wendy and I, I mean, I don't make these decisions on my own, by any means, but we don't always get a lot of qualified people, so I guess I should say that when I say we get forty applicants, that doesn't mean.
And as far as interns, the interns come from the colleges, and Central Florida and Santa Fe did not send us interns, so those, they come from U F. But you don't, people can say, oh, I apply, I apply, ninety percent of your people that apply from the city of Bronson or from Levee County itself are not qualified for those positions. And as an employee that does.
Some of them didn't even get.
If they didn't get interviews because they're not qualified, let me explain, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful to Virginia, I understand that. I have ten jobs I do on an eight-hour basis, if I have to then take six months and teach them, like I've had to in the past, one of our past, I don't have a reason for you, because if you can't come in and allow me to sit down and teach you QuickBooks, you have no background in accounting, or financials, or any of that stuff, I can't, I don't have the time in my day to teach somebody that repeatedly.
But the difference is, is that if you're just padding somebody's resume versus someone who's not leaving the town of Bronson, then all the time that you put into them teaching them QuickBooks is gonna be here, that's what I mean. Like, a- and don't get me wrong, I know that not every position you're gonna be able to hire with from within, but it just seems like a lot of our jobs are not even considered inside the town of Bronson, and Bronson is not just so big, I mean.
I can tell you, the last person we interviewed from the town of Bronson that lived within the city limits, she had a great resume, and she called the next day and told me, I don't know how to type. She goes, so if I can't have the job and I can't type, does that affect it? Yeah, that affects it. It's those kinda things, and it's, it's just, I don't think people understand how much goes on in the office, so that if we have to sit there and teach somebody repeatedly, repeatedly, it's great, except that if it takes me three months to teach you things because you're only there for two days a week, I'm now three months behind in my job, and then your bills aren't gonna get paid, people aren't gonna get your wages, your taxes, all this kinda stuff isn't gonna be done. But we look at experience, we don't even look at where you're from.
Don't you have people in the office, what do you do?
There's three people in the office.
Okay, you got you, you got Sue.
And I have Kelly, and then I have.
All right, who else are you having?
We haven't hired anybody in the past three years, we haven't needed anybody.
So I didn't, I wanna know this, when it comes to, roughly, public works? Do public works, I, his people?
Yeah, Curtis hires all his people.
All right, do you all get involved with this?
I do not get involved. That's Curtis, Curtis and I.
And you, why do you have to be?
Well, she's the city, she does the town business.
She don't know nobody's job.
Have you asked Curtis if Curtis wants Sue involved, because if I'm not mistaken, Curtis has always had Sue involved in it.
Is the internet working right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that's part of your job. Plainly so. Um, county just hired a brand new, or is it Frost just hired a brand new county manager, not coordinator, same scenario.
And you'd be surprised at who are applying for that position.
Yeah, you would hit the major gains you're applying for.
Wow.
You see what they was paying for?
We have some folks that applied for the coordinator application back.
Yep, so, anyhow, I'm gonna tell you where she paid bills.
I make a motion and pay the bills.
How's that?
All of the papers, you can find them saying I.
I.
Oh.
I.